All right, well, with that being said, now that we have the whole committee is here, focus whenever you're ready, we are ready.
Jesse, do you have more?
Yep, I've got you, Tim.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we are now good to go according to focus, so welcome, everybody. This is the July 28th, 2020 meeting of the Sustainability Environment Committee. We are meeting virtually via Zoom and this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later for the purposes of the public being able to have a full view of the meeting and everything that took place during it. We are joined by the two members of the committee, Counselor Gomez and Counselor Edwards, as well as Counselor Dabila, Counselor Allen, the City Solicitor at Pacula, and Building Commissioner Steve Deslitz. So, thank you all for being with us. I wanted to call the meeting to follow up on our conversation that had taken place earlier in the year just before we had the pandemic come upon us. Certainly, the council and the city and all employees have been focused on the response to COVID-19. And so, now that we have just started being able to hold subcommittee meetings again, and while we certainly are not taking our focus off of COVID-19, we are returning to some regular business, I wanted to wrap up the conversation that I know had begun in that committee meeting. I think if I recall correctly, it had run into another committee meeting. And the questions that we were addressing at that time that I was hoping to just get some finality to was the status of the building permit for the project proposed at 1,000 Page Boulevard or Caldwell Drive. We were discussing that building permit and its status. We were also discussing whether that type of a project would require a special permit under the current zoning ordinance today if it was to be proposed. And those are really the two questions that we were looking to get an answer to. So I figured we might just start by asking Building Commissioner, just what is the current status of that project at 1,000 Page Boulevard in the eyes of the city currently?
Currently, the permit, it still stands. Last meeting that I had with them, they followed up with an extension letter that puts them out to, I believe, November 15th, or it was 180 days from whatever they gave us the last letter, I believe, in May. But currently, they do have a building permit. There is some process work that's going on. They'll start working on trying to get a building demolished over there. I'm not sure if they're doing any site work till after that building is demolished and then they can remove the road that's there. But plain and simple, the permit, the building permit is still good from the move forward.
And when Commissioner, was the last inspection of that site?
I'd have to look on the record. I haven't looked at the site myself, I can't. There's something I could follow back up with you on.
Yeah, so I'd like to know when the last inspection took place. And then just relative to your last statement, so it said, it sounded like in your opinion, the building permit is, right now, you're saying good until November 15th, 2020?
No, no, they sent us an extension letter. If you take May 12th on the letter that they gave us, May 12th, 2020, that's a 180-day extension.
So what is, I'm familiar with the document you're referring to, you're referring to a letter that was sent to us to express, you know, what they felt their scope of work had been thus far. But what is, you know, an extension letter for the purposes of just definition?
It's just a communication between us and the Building Department that we know we have activity on the site. You know, it's just, it's more paperwork shuffled back and forth that we have something on file, that there is communication going back and forth with the developers on any project. If there's a holdup for some other reason, they're sending us a letter stating that, you know, they're still active in the construction or design of the property and intending to go forward with progress on the construction.
So what formal or legal effect does a communication like that have?
As far as legal, I mean, it's just part of our process. It's in the building code where it is part of a process in the building code on the permitting section where, for some reason, if a project is stalled or if they're in a design process and they may have missed the starting process line that the building code talks about, they have the right to communicate with us, asking for a 180-day extension and review from there.
So, in that May letter, did they request a 180-day extension and review from there?
Yeah.
Explicitly?
And that's, what you're talking about in that letter was that during that process part, they were working on getting buildings demolished that they have on the contract with, I believe it was Associated Records.
Does that, does that letter explicitly request an extension?
Yeah, it should. I mean, that's how we accept it. It's usually always an extension, is talking about the extension of the building permit.
So the reason I ask Commissioner, so, you know, you sent us an opinion on January 17th, 2019, or a ruling, I should say, rather, which stated that that building permit would essentially, without extension, expire four years from September 8th, 2015, which was when it was finally issued free and clear from the land court. And that would put it as having expired on or around September 9th, 2019. And so, the reason that I wanted to hold the meeting here today was I felt that in the last meeting, and through no fault of your own, I know you weren't able to be present, there was some confusion as to whether or not that building permit lapsed on or around September 9th, 2019.
Well, I don't know if there's confusion on it. We asked, you asked for a legal opinion on it. The City Solicitor gave you a legal opinion on it.
So I don't think I received a legal opinion on whether the permit expired on or around September 9th, 2019. I have a ruling from you, signed by you on January 17th, 2019, that implied, or that explicitly stated that it was good for four years from September 8th, 2015.
Right.
And so, my question is, is if it was good from four years from September 8th, 2015, that would mean September 8th, September 9th, 2019 would have been the expiration of that permit, that building permit. And so my, I guess the question is, is did that building permit expire?
No, it hasn't.
And what action stopped it from expiring on or around September 8th, 2019?
Just the amount of work that they've done. They've done work on the site, they've done work preparing as with this extension letters, moving forward with the demolition of the building. They purchased property there, they've moved part of the road, they put a road in. I'm not sure what they've done for the site work there. All for any inspections per se on any of the actual foundation work or anything, or I don't believe any of that has started. But they've made some improvements to the property per se by buying buildings, preparing the property. They've got significant investment in it. So at this point, I have no legal authority to pull the building permit from them.
So, so what you're essentially saying is that you're holding that because of the amount of work that may or may not have occurred before September 8th, 2019, they acted upon the building permit?
Yeah, they acted upon it.
So, I disagree, Commissioner, and certainly, you know, you are going to be the one that would issue a ruling on it. But, you know, my position in reviewing the facts before us is that there is a difference between substantial construction and site preparation. And I would argue that what has occurred at that site currently is site preparation, not substantial construction. And that leads me to believe that the building permit did expire on or around September 8th, 2019, and that they may not be properly permitted at this time. So that's why I have the concern and why I called the meeting today. And so I guess the question is, how can we request an official ruling from you as to the status of that building permit relative to this conversation today so that we might be able to review that official opinion and then have, you know, whatever other recourse if we agree or disagree that might be accessible?
Same, what you've done in the past, send a letter requesting an opinion on, based on this meeting or conversation, and we'll answer back. And I'll consult with the City Solicitor on any possible legal issues or ramifications on it, and any case law that may be involved around building permits and revoking the building permits.
That's fair enough, Commissioner, and I appreciate your candidness. So, the second question I have, and then I open it up to any other colleagues that may like to address it, is just relative to if a project like this, which is another, I think another question that we had posed previously, but not sure we had wrapped up the answer on it. If a project that included these types of characteristics was proposed as a new project, would that project require a special permit under the current zoning order?
As of right now, I'd have to go back and review with the City Ordinance now what changes are involved in it. If you want to put that forward to me in a written request, we'll do a zoning opinion on it, and we'll answer that question for you.
Sure. So we can certainly, we can certainly put that together.
I don't, is that really relevant now? I mean, it's, this is what's, unless they're coming back and actually reapplying for another building permit as another project, do you guys know of a secondary project that's going on?
I would just like to know.
Oh, just, just off the cuff for me, okay.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I will prepare a formal request to the Building Commissioner regarding these two questions, you know, as we've done previously. And I would also like, Commissioner, if you could follow up on what other inspections have occurred since our last conversation. I know that, I think we had said that it works, inspections set to occur by your department this year, but I'm sure with COVID-19, that, that may have moved, you know, those inspections may have been moved, certainly for the safety of your employees, which we understand. Are there any other questions from anybody, any other counselors that would like to pose any questions?
I have to put my hand up real quick.
Oh, sure, yes, sorry, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Gomez.
Just also, as a member of the committee, if, when you put in that formal request, if you could put it as also, because under the, my title is development, because those are questions and stuff that, you know, in my, in my subcommittee, so essentially, you're asking really good questions that I was going to have a meeting for, but we're doing it in this, in this committee, and I look forward to finding out what are those answers. So I just wanted to just be a part of that. And outside of being a part of this committee, I don't have to hold the meeting over there. So I appreciate you, your due diligence, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. We'll definitely include you in the request and any other counselors that would like to be included in the request. Or Counselor Gomez, if you'd like to, you know, make that in the form of a motion, you know, we can just, we can agree to issue the request out of the committee and then I'll just write it down.
I like to, I would like the motion just to submit a formal request. I don't know verbatim what you had asked, so just want to move, move the request on the information that was asked of Commissioner Steve Deslitz.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Edwards. For the purposes of the virtual meeting, I suppose I'll take a roll call vote of the two members. So, Counselor Gomez?
Hi.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
And I also, yes. So we'll certainly forward that request to the Commissioner. Counselor Dabila, you have your hand up?
Yes, Counselor Letterman. I will certainly vote in favor of it as well.
Oh, I apologize, Counselor Hurst, I didn't realize you had joined us. It just says Justin's iPhone, sorry about that. Yes, Counselor Hurst, thank you. And of course, Counselor Hurst is a member of the.
I'm just messing with you, Counselor Letterman, but yes, absolutely.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. President. Counselor Dabila, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Good afternoon, everybody. Commissioner, good to see you. I just have a quick question. I was wondering if you could give me a quick description with the difference between substantial construction versus site prep?
Question for the Commissioner, Counselor?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner.
To the Building Commissioner?
Yes, I believe so, yes, Counselor Dabila.
Well, I mean, substantial construction, what we've looked at in the past, and this is, we've looked at law cases on this in the past. You don't necessarily, when you say substantial construction or substantial work, I don't have the exact article in front of me, you got to be careful what you're asking for when you're, you're just pinpointing substantial construction, that's one thing. I don't believe the master general law, when they talk about permit extension, is talking about the actual construction of it from what I've seen in the past, and I've seen the way rulings have gone through BBRS on this. So, companies, when they're coming into a project, whether it be a large residential project, commercial buildings, projects, and if you look at the Permit Extending Act, it encompassed a lot of different projects. You know, it talks about office buildings, very also, and before anybody even sees a shovel hit the ground sometimes, these companies, developers, I mean, have millions of dollars investments tied up into property designs, engineering, testing, there may be remediation on the product, property for contamination. Those are all considered into the substantial part of the construction project, so I would have to say in our opinion, substantial construction or substantial part of the project, that all kind of gets rolled into the opinion of it.
But, I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out, because you used the word, if I'm not mistaken, you say they don't substantial construction. And I'm just trying to, I don't know what you're saying.
No, I think your committee chair, your committee chair kept saying substantial construction.
I know that the chair did say that he thought that they don't site prep. I do believe that you did mention substantial construction. If I'm mistaken, please, Chair, correct me.
I can't speak to the, I can't speak for the Commissioner. What I can say is I asked the Commissioner, Counselor Dabila, why the permit remained valid past the time that we had previously been told it may expire. And, you know, the two things that would make it valid, in my understanding, is if it was, you know, granted an extension or if it was acted upon. In my understanding, which is why I'm requesting the formal opinion, to make sure that I'm correct in my understanding, is that if it was acted upon, it would need to be acted upon with what would be called substantial construction. And so that is, that is the term that I was discussing. And I believe that there is a difference between substantial construction and site prep. Again, I can't speak for the Commissioner, certainly appreciate the Commissioner being here and respect all the work he does, but, you know, that's, that was what I said. Commissioner, did you want to add to that?
Again, if you look, again, if you're looking for a legal opinion on it, put that in your questions, we'll look at, but frame it, if you're looking just to narrowly say what is considered substantial construction based on what legal premises?
Well, I'm not looking, I'm just trying to get some clarity.
Counselor Dabila, let the Commissioner finish, and I know it's virtual, so it's difficult, but let, just so we can keep everybody straight. Commissioner, did you want to finish what you were saying?
Yeah, frame that as, you want a legal opinion of what's considered substantial construction? Frame it in the context of what, what, what kind of opinion you're looking for substantial construction?
Well, I wasn't looking for an opinion, but if the Chair wishes to do so, I'm okay with that. I'm just trying to get some clarity on what you were saying as to what substantial construction is versus site prep. But let me ask you, if I could just move on to another question if I may, so that I'm clear, right now, they have a valid building permit, they're not operating under an extension.
Is that question to me? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, right, right now, they're operating under a valid building permit.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes, can, actually, what I'd like to see happen or would request respectfully of Ed is when he creates the opinion, that he includes the definition of the statement of the acquisition of property as part of construction. The permit was granted for the, for the, when I think of the description of construction is you're putting things together to build something, and why would their need to add a road or even, not if, even if you took the road away, the acquisition of other property that wasn't a part of the original permit was, it was presented, or why would that be part of a definition of construction? Acquisition of property is just, is an issue of ownership, isn't it? Where the construction is actually the creation of something, and one is just taking ownership of something that was possessed by someone else. And so I'd like to have some clarity around that question, obviously.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. I'll certainly include that in the request when I send it over this evening. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President, or Mr. Chair, or whatever you are. I have a question, and how many, how many times can you extend?
What was, was that question to me? I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah, Steve, yeah, I mean, if they're operating under an extension now, which was from May to November, we, apparently, they had an extension from last September to May, which, you know, Counselor Letterman is questioning that, that extension, but let's just assume it was there. So that was an eight-month period, which is an odd, odd period, because this was a six-month period. So let's just say they had an extension from last September, an extension now that leaves two extensions. Is that something that can continue forever, or at some point, is there more required in order to extend?
Yeah, again, that's, that's something, I would, I would consult the legal opinion of the city, because you're going to have to look at legal court cases on this, if there's something, let's say, if there was something relatively close to this, we'd have to seek a legal opinion, say, hey, was there, was there some kind of timeline that, you know, the state has looked at and say, hey, after five extensions and an opinion of substantial construction wasn't met, or however the language is put together on the Permitic Extension Act and combination of the Building Code, is there, is there some kind of witness test where it's a drop dead date? In other words, the state has looked at it, say, you know, hey, you had five shots at this or whatever. There wasn't any substantial investment past a certain point, whether it be site work, engineering work, design, buying of products, permit goes dead. Again, that's going to come down to you're seeking a legal opinion on that.
I understand, but I'm just following up a little bit on Counselor Edwards' thing that, you know, that construction is different from the original investment. There's no doubt they made an investment, and at some point, construction is an enhancement to the investment of some sort. And so, so, okay, so I understand that. My other question is, could we get a tour of the place? You said you haven't been there, Steve. Maybe when you go, we could go or something. It just, it's all, you know, it's all vaporware to me. I mean, there's, you know, I haven't really looked at the, at the thing for a while, and I'd like to be able to see what substantial construction they've done.
I would, I would say you guys have all the right in the world, if you want to suggest contacting the developer and seeing if he can set up a tour of the buildings that they have there, their planned demolition and some order timelines. Like I said, I haven't been to the site since earlier in the years, so I'm not sure how much site work has been done or what they're doing for testing or remediation right now. But that's probably not a bad, your part to, you know, reach out to developers, say, hey, you know, we want a tour of the property and what's going on, give us an update on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Allen. I've got hands up from the Solicitor and from Counselor Edwards, so I'll come to you, gentlemen, just very momentarily. Commissioner, I just, I just had one question relative to what Counselor Allen said, which was, you know, he, he mentioned an extension. I didn't interpret what you had said at the beginning of the meeting to mean that you had granted any extensions beyond, beyond September. It sounded to me, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, what your interpretation of the current status is, it sounded to me like you were saying it, an extension wasn't needed because they had acted upon the permit. So, did they act upon the permit or were they granted an extension to do so?
No, at the time, they've acted on the permit, when I told them in the beginning before it follows, part of protocol of the Building Code, if there's any non-substantial work at the site per se, they need to stay in contact with this. It's, it's a letter form that they, they send out to us every 180 days, basically give us an update what's going on and requesting that the permit is still active and they're, they're extending the permit. Because in a situation where, like I said, they could be spending millions of dollars on the engineering, let's say, for the turbine right now, that engineering at a turbine may take eight to nine months. Physically, nobody's going to see anything going on at that site at the time when the engineering work's going on, or maybe some mediation work or more engineering and design work. So, it's a way of staying engaged with the contractors and developers that we know what's going on, and they're still engaged in a project.
And based off of that letter, you grant an extension?
Yeah, it keeps the permit valid.
So, prior to September 8th, 2019, Commissioner, I'm confused, because I feel like a couple of different things have been said. The permit, according to the decision that you conveyed to us last year, was set to expire on or around September 8th, 2019. So, if they acted upon the permit, then it would not expire. I agree with that. The question is, did they act upon the permit prior to September 8th, 2019? I'm understanding what you're saying to be that they did act upon the permit because of the work that they did. Are you saying that it's because of the work that they did or because they, they stayed in communication with the office and let you know what work, or what was going on behind the scenes?
No, I clearly, clearly stated, it was based upon what they've accomplished so far, what they're planning, what they've invested on it. So again, from that point going forward, if you're not going to see any kind of work there, which is you guys are questioning, I'm not seeing anything going on.
I see what you're saying.
This is why this process is involved.
You're saying they acted, you're saying your interpretation is, is that they acted upon it prior to September 8th, 2019, and then there was a lag, but they acted upon it and they are working on some other things? That is, is that what you're saying?
Correct. So part of this process is to stay, stay involved, and again, is this, this every 180 days to stay involved. So, again, that's what I refer back to, if you need a legal opinion on this, then your legal opinion request is going to be basically, coming from the point of view that I can see you guys are coming from, would be, how many, how many extensions can they possibly go with this? Is there a legal witness test that, can this go on for five years? Can this go on for three years? Can there, what's, what's the end game in there if there is no progress from, from point A to point B?
That's, that's a fair, fair, fair question. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Counselor Edwards, followed by Solicitor Pacula.
Once again, very respectfully, I'd ask that the Commissioner actually do an inspection. If he hasn't had one recently, then I don't think, then, then, I mean, at the very least, we should have an updated inspection to have some clarity as to whether, you know, what has transpired and what's been, you know, what's the status of the construction. I think that's very least, that shouldn't be too egregious to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Solicitor?
Thank you, Counselor. I wanted to try to bring some clarity around some of the relevant issues here and the relevant facts. A timeline was provided by the permit holder as to 11 different phases that have been involved or are going to be involved with regard to the two built permit or edit here. Those outline the process and the work to be done, and provides the timeline also, and provides the money that was spent. And I think that brought us through November of last year. The other significant thing that has happened, of course, is COVID. As a result of COVID, in April of 2020, the legislature passed a new Permit Extension Act that applied to locally issued permits. And that act has a couple relevant sections in it. One that says it goes on until after the emergency ends. So, you know, that, there is no end in sight. We don't have that. Two, it says, while it's not a moratorium, you're not prevented from revoking permits or issuing permits. It prohibits the revocation of a permit on grounds that someone failed to act during this period. So, that's going to play a role in whether you're inspecting the premises or whether you just don't feel this is going fast enough, you want this to progress faster. But the caution is that we haven't had any complaints about any safety concerns at the sites. we haven't had any complaints about any safety concerns at the sites. We do know it's been very complex. At the, the road construction was just not some whimsical thing. It was a part of the phased construction. They had legal disputes with overeasements. They had fights with Eversource. There have been all kinds of complications here. But the point of the matter is, we have the work that was done in the 11 phases in the letter that was provided to you at the last meeting. We have the Permit Extension Act signed by Governor Baker in April of 2020. And we have the May 2020 request for an extension of 180 days, sort of as a bootstrapping of, of rights, not only of what they have done, what the Permit Extension Act provides, but also the extension pursuant to the building law. The only other point I want to make is, remember, this was conditioned upon special permits or variances that were granted. And there's, Chapter 48 has lapse provisions under those. So when we're talking about the issue of substantial construction or what have you, you need to know that the case law we have typically talks about variances and special permits and lapses. And essentially, once you've recorded it in the registry of deeds, that's all you have to do. What the building commissioner made reference to is the state agency where questions about interpreting building permits is at issue. And that body of administrative law, if you will, very, very favorable towards developers when it comes to extending building permits. So unless there's a safety provision, the, the, at, at this stage, grounds for revocation is not likely. The only other thing I'd like to weigh in on is, I believe I have looked, and I may have provided a opinion on this in the past, that the new zoning ordinance does would, would have required a special permit had this come out. And that has to do with the scope, the size of this project and the amount that's being spent on it, as opposed to what we lost the lawsuit over. You might recall, there was a lawsuit brought and the claim was made, well, this is really an incinerator. And the court said, well, if this is an incinerator, then everybody who has a wood stove as an incinerator needs a special permit. So no, it's not an incinerator. So that was under the old zoning ordinance. Now, the new zoning ordinance, we don't have to look at that issue of, is it an incinerator or not? We look at the scope of it. And I believe we looked at it before, and I believe I may have given you an opinion that says the, under the new zoning act, there is a need for a special permit. So that, I hope, puts some clarification, puts things in context, and will help you as you're drafting your requests to get what you want.
Thank you very much, Solicitor, for, for that clarification. And it does help with the drafting of the request. You know, I think that it, you know, my, my concern, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting, is that the permit did not last during COVID. It's that it actually lapsed on or around September 8th, 2019. That's my concern as to why I feel that they may or may not.
I believe we gave you an, an opinion on that previously, and that had the 11 phases that they were going.
I believe that we, I believe that we discussed the 11 phases and the steps that they've taken. And in, in my interpretation of that is that it, it wasn't, it, my, my opinion, but I am not the city solicitor or the building commissioner, is that, that, that wasn't sufficient in terms of showing that the building permit was acted upon, which is why, you know, we'd like to request the, the formal determination. So I think we've got a lot of questions answered here this afternoon. Did anybody else, counselors or solicitor or commissioner, want to add anything to the conversation? Seeing none, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion made by Counsel Gomez, seconded by Counselor Edwards. On the motion to adjourn, Counsel Gomez. Counselor Edwards? Counselor Hurst?
Hi.
Thank you all very much. My pleasure. Thank you, Focus Springfield Solicitor Commissioner. Stay cool. Enjoy the rest of the evening.